Move for approval of that reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Announcements, reports, recognitions, proclamations. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I just wanted to mention briefly the incident that occurred this past Friday at the River Chase Galleria and just to continue to extend our condolences to the family of Royte Giles. His mom and grandmother actually have done some work for us in the city and we -- many people know them. The grandmother particularly. We have -- one of our employees goes to church with her, so we really feel like she's part of the family. And I want to really praise our first responders, how they handled everything this past week. Just did a fine job getting that situation under control. And I know that they had to deal with just a very difficult -- a very difficult situation, but as usual, they did it professionally and we're grateful for them. But we want to continue just to pray for that family and the family of those that were injured as well and certainly the businesses at the River Chase Galleria that are going through some really difficult times. But I just want our community to know that we are working very hard to restore stability there and to restore confidence. And that is a wonderful place that has suffered and had some, you know, some difficult things that happen in its lifespan. But we are not going to give up. We're going to fight for our city and make sure that it is a place that everyone can feel at home and safe and enjoy being here. And with that said, let me transition into something that we are very, very proud of and that would be our parks. This is National Park Month, designated as Park and Recreation Month. We're very proud in our city of what we have, from our all-inclusive park out at the Met to our nature trails to Moss Rock, our River Chase Greenway. We even have a dog park, so we cover it all. Do a great job. Our people really enjoy it. I have Mr. Bobby Humphries, who is our Park Board President, and Craig Moss, our Hoover Park and Rec Department head, here tonight. And I would ask our counselor to, if you would, read our proclamation, but first, if you two gentlemen would come up. Will.
Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Hoover, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, and improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas the city of Hoover recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore, I, Frank V. Brocato, Mayor of Hoover, Alabama, do hereby proclaim July as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Hoover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to the City Council. Very briefly, just want to make sure that everybody understands the value and the quality of life that our parks and our recreation provide for the citizens of Hoover, as well as our visitors and guests. As Chairman of the Board, along with our Director and the great Board that we serve on, to be able to continue to provide these services, I want to assure you that we will continue with our utmost effort to provide quality and service for all the citizens of Hoover and make sure we continue to put forth effort to have the best parks and recreation that we can provide for the citizens here. Thank you so much.
Sorry? Oh, a meeting crashed. Technology. We'll be getting started hearing in just a moment. Those council chambers would be nice to go back to, won't they, gentlemen? Can anybody hear us online? Are we completely off? I see people still logged in. For those of you who don't know her, that's our Tourism Director on the screen. And if you can hear us at home, we're having some technical difficulty and we'll be back to you in just a moment. I'm sorry? Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Might anyone have a Sharpie in their pocket? You can make a little sign that says no audio. I'm sorry? Mr. Corley.
Yes, sir.
Because of the technical difficulty, can we go ahead and get with the agenda until -- well, we don't even have a public hearing tonight.
There isn't.
It's a first reading in the setting of a public hearing. Legally, would you advise that we can continue? Because we don't know how long we're going to be down.
Yes, sir. My opinion is that because we noticed the meeting for this location and we have a quorum present and the meeting is open to the public, that we can continue the meeting.
You do. Okay. Madam Clerk, you make sure that that shows up in the minutes. Item seven, Payment of the Bills. Mr. Leiter.
Mr. President, move for payment of the bills as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Resolution sixty-two seventy-three twenty.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into a yearly renewal of the HIDTA Agreement between ALIA and the City of Hoover Police Department.
Chair is open for a motion.
President, move for approval. Resolution six-two-seven-three-twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Rice.
Yes, sir. Chief Durst is not available to be here tonight. I can get him on the phone if you have any specific questions that I can't answer for you. This is our annual agreement with the Drug Enforcement Agency and we receive $59,000 to cover overtime for HIDA-related activities, so there's no outlay on the part of the city. This is strictly money to cover some of our overtime.
Any questions from the council? Any from those here in the audience? Seeing, hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Resolution sixty-two seventy-four twenty. Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute and enter into an ingress and egress-access agreement between the City of Hoover and the Lake Cyrus Master Homeowners Association in substantially the form attached to the resolution as Exhibit A.
Motion to approve Resolution six-two-seven-four-twenty.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is Mr. Reeves here tonight?
He's right there. He's on camera. Never mind, I'm wrong guy.
It's hard to recognize a lot of people tonight. Mr. Reeves.
Yes, sir.
Want to tell us about this resolution?
Yes, sir. This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute an ingress and egress easement with Lake Cyrus Masters Owners Association. This easement will allow us to access underneath the Lake Cyrus Boulevard Bridge to perform maintenance. Excuse me.
So this is the repairs that we've been working towards for a number of months.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is. There is an improved capital project, you know, to do these repairs.
Mm-hmm.
We do have the funding in place. There are a few conditions. Part of the agreement, one was that we would, upon completion of the project, we would -- excuse me. We would construct and sod a four-foot berm in the immediate area that we disturbed. Their thinking is that if we left that area open, it would be an attractive nuisance. People would be trying to get down to Shades Creek and right in front of the subdivision. So that was one of the requests from Lake Cyrus. Also, to add pine straw in the vehicle access area when we finish to address erosion along Shades Creek. And the third one was to repair any curb and gutter that was damaged by the vehicles using its access.
One question I've got. Is this a dedicated roadway?
Lake Cyrus Boulevard is.
And the bridge.
This access is not.
The bridge, is it dedicated roadway?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Maintenance of the bridge belongs to us.
I was just wondering, why do we need the agreement if it's a dedicated street?
Because of the embankments, they're so steep, we cannot get any equipment down there to Shades Creek. So we needed that access to access to creek to work back to the bridge piers.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any from the audience? Those of you online, I'm sorry.
We're functioning.
Are the sounds back on? Okay. For those that are keeping up, we're on item nine. We tried to go slow. Is there anyone online that wants to speak to this issue? This is for the repair of the bridge, the agreement to allow the city to be able to have access to the property needed to repair the bridge. Nobody? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have Resolution sixty-two seventy-five twenty. Mr. Rice.
Yes, this resolution authorizes the mayor to fill an employee position vacancy set forth in the resolution.
Move to approve Resolution sixty-two seventy-five twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Rice.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is for one extra-board firefighter position. The annual -- I'm sorry. The hourly salary is $17.43 an hour. Annual cost, if they worked the maximum allowable hours, is approximately $28,000 with prorated benefits.
Is this one of the usual numbers within the extra-board limitations?
Yes, sir.
And it's just being a new hire?
No, sir. This is not a new position. This is permission per the resolution previously to fill an existing vacancy for an extra-
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Anyone online want to speak to the hiring of this part-time firefighter? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have Resolution sixty-two seventy-six twenty. Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with a total of 14 entities for the continued collaborative effort of the Compact 2020.
Move to approve Resolution six-two-seven-six twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Rice.
Yes, sir. Much like the HIDA agreement, this is the annual renewal of our Compact 2020 agreement with the entities that you have listed in your packet. We actually receive a $30,000 per year stipend toward the salary of one detective that we keep signed to Compact 2020, and we also receive a vehicle and the fuel for the use of that vehicle throughout the terms of the year.
How many years has the city participated in this program? Did it just start last year?
No, sir. Compact 2020 has probably been -- probably the length of this term.
Okay.
I think I remember going to a meeting right at the beginning of this term, so probably we're probably going in our fourth year.
Very good. It's an excellent program. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Anyone online like to speak to the Compact 2020 agreement? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Resolution sixty-two seventy-seven twenty has been asked to be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Move to continue Resolution six-two-seven-seven twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Resolution sixty-two seventy-eight twenty. Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor and city clerk to enter into a municipal election services agreement with the Jefferson County Commission.
Move to approve Resolution six-two-seven-eight twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Everyone should have received a new copy of the contract with a new total for this. This is the cost of conducting the municipal election on August 25th using assets from Jefferson County. Madam Clerk, anything else you'd like to add?
No, that was -- yeah, we do have some other calls with Shelby County, but this is for all the machines and what's related.
For this particular.
That's correct.
All right. Any questions for the clerk? Anyone from the audience? Anyone online? For those of you that are unaware, qualifying for this coming election starts tomorrow and runs for two weeks.
Three. It ends on the 21st.
Till July 21st?
I'm going to make sure on the 21st, the 7th through the 21st.
All right. 7th through the 21st. Any comments or questions from the council? I think we already went through this, didn't we? No one online wanted to speak? All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have first reading of ordinance 20-2484.
This ordinance amends Chapter 11, Article 7, Section 11-153 of the Municipal Code of the City of Hoover, related to the reduction, control, and prevention of noise.
And we also have a first reading for ordinance 20-2485.
This ordinance modifies Chapter 3, Alcoholic Beverages, to establish the regulations for entertainment districts within the city of Hoover and to establish the Stadium Trace Village Entertainment District.
And this would be the first entertainment district of three that the state has already permitted the city of Hoover to establish. Next, we have the second reading. Madam Clerk, will be at our next meeting?
That's correct.
Very good. I know that according to the custom of this term, do we have anyone from the city to speak to the changes in the noise ordinance? Mr. Martin, how are you?
Good evening. All right. Here quickly to go over the alterations to the noise ordinance. The most significant change that we are proposing to the council, this issue actually raised a couple of council meetings ago when we were discussing special events and amending our zoning ordinance to accommodate for special events on private property and the limitations that were included in that amendment regarding timeframes. It was brought to our attention, we may have a conflict in the noise ordinance, particularly as it relates to these special events taking place in parking areas or vehicular use areas. And so we, I along with our legal team, went back and we did find that there is a potential conflict there that we wanted to bring to you guys, a potential resolution. And so, a couple of changes, the most significant one being that we're proposing adding several exceptions to the provisions of the noise ordinance. And we highlight those as city-sponsored events, events that are taking place on public property that have been approved by the city, special events on private property that have been approved by the city, subject to the limitations of the recent amendment to the zoning ordinance, and all activities and events at the Hoover Met Complex. There was some question that would arise, should there be an event in the parking lot of the Hoover Met Complex? So we really wanted to remove all doubt when it came to that facility. Some exemptions already existed in the ordinance, but with the help of the legal department, we went and reorganized the presentation of this ordinance such that the exclusions are listed in their own section. The other changes that are being proposed are pretty minor in nature. One is just adding a title to the ordinance. It was rather difficult to find the noise section of the ordinance for the layperson because it didn't have a title. So we did that. We've added the title to this section and we've added titles to each of the sections within the noise ordinance. We also defined who a responsible party is. When the ordinance in its present condition talks about those facing fines or penalties, it doesn't really define who the responsible party is. So our legal team included a definition for that term. And that's really the extent to which we're proposing amendments to this body.
Very good. Any questions from the council? Thank you, sir. Next, the entertainment district. Mr. Pat. Forced himself to come all the way back from the beach just to meet with us.
Pat Lynch, 2312 Black Ridge Drive, Hoover. We're asking for the first designation of the entertainment district, the Stadium Trace Village. And we drafted an ordinance by working with the council legal to make sure we addressed any issues that they brought up. So we kind of have a model plan and I can answer any questions the council may have tonight.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lynch, as I was reading over this material, the approved containers of alcoholic beverages that would be taken out, it's referred to approved containers several times. What -- who would approve the containers? Is that going to be something standard that if this should pass, all businesses would have?
What we try to do, Mr. Green, is have a logoed cup from each ABC-approved restaurant bar, and that's the only container that could be used in the district. There won't be any beer bottles. There won't be red solo cups. So if someone's carrying an alcoholic beverage, it's got to be in a logoed cup from one of those establishments.
And the amount that container can hold?
No more than 16 ounces.
No more than 16 ounces? Thank you.
Are there other opportunities besides planning and zoning that the council would be voting on how this district is placed together?
Well, if you refer to that map, is that what you're referring to, of how the district's laid out? It's all the boundaries.
I mean, at the next meeting when we vote, we would be voting, the entertainment district, is it going to have all the detail?
Based on the map that we've laid out. We've tried to make sure that places that didn't need to be, like UAB, Aldi's, the non-alcoholic --
didn't need to be, like UAB, Aldi's, the non-alcoholic fast food places, the mattress place, were outside the district. There's no reason for somebody to carry a drink over to Aldi's or to UAB. So, we tried to address that to make sure that there wasn't a lot of that traffic going on.
I believe a question came up today with the operating hours, especially since you've got one business that's already, I believe, on Friday and Saturday night, operating to 1:00 in the morning.
What I asked to do was mirror the hours of the operation of the establishments in there. As we know, being in Hoover, there'll be very few people there at 1:00. And I don't want, I'd like to mirror what they're doing, but my thought is they're probably gonna bring those hours back, just because this is not a late-night city.
Okay. So, you anticipate that establishment to come back to the hours regulated within the district?
Well, I think what we did was mirror their hours in the ordinance.
Very good.
Mr. President.
Dr. Middlebrooke.
Mr. Lynch, would the developer be consent to having a designated car service spot for people that need to call?
There'll be valet service in the back part of the, is that what you're asking, Dr. Middlebrooke?
If they were to call Uber or taxi or so forth, there'd be a designated area?
I will make sure to be able to address that next meeting. My thought is it makes sense to do that. So, I'll make sure that I answer that question definitively.
Mr. President, I've got another question, Mr. Lynch. On page 6, Section 3-45, it talks about, quickly I'll read, "An entertainment district established by this article may be enlarged, reduced, modified, or eliminated in whole or part at any time and for any reason, including but not limited to finding the operation of such a district has become a nuisance or that the district is otherwise not being operated in the best public interest, including the lack of security." Now, just stopped there at "security." What measures, since this is in our documentation, what measures of security will be taken?
Well, they'll have security plus Birmingham Police. And it's just like any alcoholic beverage licensee. If it becomes a nuisance, the license is jerked by the ABC. You have complete control as a council. If this becomes a nuisance, or you have people that are complaining about it, you can rescind.
Why would we have Birmingham Police?
I mean Hoover Police. Did I say Birmingham? I'm sorry, I drove a long way to you because I'm in...
Just checking. Any other questions from the council? Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, so this is purely defined by the council. Planning and zoning has no input on the boundaries of that?
Mr. Corley?
It's purely the council.
All right. Thank you.
Does planning and zoning have any responsibilities with this?
No, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Corley?
Yes.
This would be for you. I was also reading right above the 345 that I just referred to, and it talks about, should the area be closed, the chief of police may close that area. Is that correct? Reading, "At any time, the chief of police or his designated should have the authority to close a district or portion of the district and require persons to disperse from the area, should he or she, in her sole role and discretion, determine that it is appropriate to do so in order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare." My question, "The entertainment district shall remain closed until the city council, the mayor, or the chief of police allows the district to reopen. Which of those three entities would prevail?"
I believe under the ordinance, any of those three entities could declare it to be reopened.
What if there's disagreement?
My question is to you, is what if the council says, "We don't want it to reopen," and the mayor says he does, and the police chief says he doesn't, which of the three will prevail legally?
Well, I would have to look at that and get you an answer.
Okay. I do think that we would need to, just in case that should...
If there was a conflict between the three, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I do think that we'd need to clear that up, should this move forward.
And I believe it allows any of the three to reopen it, but if there's a conflict between the three, then we would have to work that out.
Conflict is always possible in this business.
Could we ensure we clear that up tonight so that we don't delay this? I mean, the council's had this draft ordinance for at least a week, and we've asked for questions and comments and changes, so I'd like to get that done tonight.
Well, I mean, in the hierarchy, I mean, the council could vote to revoke the ordinance, and the council would prevail in that situation.
Revoked the ordinance?
Or revoke the entertainment district, in other words. The entertainment district is created by ordinance, and therefore, the council is responsible for that. Administratively, the mayor, the police chief could seek to reopen it, but if the council decided to close it, that would be in the council's authority.
Yeah. Right. I believe I understand. The council could have their own action, disregarding the actions of either of the other two.
Correct.
Because the council voted in the district, they could vote it out.
That's correct.
Okay. That help, Mr. Green?
No.
Not really?
He said no anyway.
We'll talk about it.
It does the conflict.
All right. Any other questions from the council? We want to make sure it was worth your trip. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Resolution 6272-20, first reading and setting of a public hearing for July 20th, 2020. Madam Clerk, I don't think Mr. Mack is here tonight.
This is just for the abatement of the resolution that we heard, and this is set in the public hearing, so it'll actually be heard for the abatement of those words.
Properties from the previous meeting.
That's correct.
Very good. Well, Mr. Mack, he just doesn't come to see us anymore. Any comments or questions from the council? In general, we're getting to the comments and questions portion of the agenda, other items.
And Council President Smith, we do have some that has signed up in the book that we haven't...
Sorry?
We have some people in the audience that has signed up to speak.
Okay. Nobody's provided me with a list, so...
He is getting worried right now. And Council President Smith, I'll need the...
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I'll need the name, street address, and city.
All right. Very good. For the record, we're gonna start off with those here in attendance, Mr. Wade Morgan. Mr. Morgan is a resident of Hoover. Would you please provide your address, please?
It's a, live in Hoover, 3150 Sawyer Drive. I wanted to make a brief comment on the letter that was sent to the city by some folks about hiring a diversity officer and requiring the accumulation of statistics and such. I think that at this point in the juncture, any hiring of additional people to look at that is not needed. We have existing personnel that should be able to provide data to the public through the city's website fairly easily, such as how diverse are departments? You know, how many males and females do we have in each department? How many ethnicities do we have in each department? We should know what policies and practices are already in place by the city to encourage diversity. Those should be able to be posted on the city's website so that people know what we're already doing. Data from the police department, especially has been a contentious subject here lately. I know that data on tickets, arrests, reports, all that's easily obtainable because it's already in the system, but that would give you a skewed view of just those who have enforcement action taken. The idea of trying to keep up with data on every race, sex, ethnicity, for every contact the police department has will quickly become a nightmare for the officers that have to try to keep up with that data. And there's not been a shown reason why we need to do that. Most departments that do that are under consent decrees from the Department of Justice, and Hoover is certainly not fall under that category. I would like to suggest something that I've seen on Birmingham's police department's webpage that'll offer a little more transparency into the department, and that is listing of the Internal Affairs complaints in the resolution. It doesn't give any identifying information, it just says, you know, on this date, a officer with the rank of whatever was investigated for the reason and the outcome, unfounded, sent to training, suspended, whatever. That, I think, opens up a window where people feel, or could feel, that things are being investigated and there are consequences when or if an officer steps out of line for any reason. Then the other thing that I've seen addressed is wanting to fund mental health and social workers to be available. I don't think that's the role of the local government. I think the local government can petition the state to better fund these areas. I certainly agree that mental health care in Alabama is pitiful. We, as a state, can do more, but to try to patchwork it together at the city level, I think will be a waste of resources and not beneficial to the conversation as a whole. With that being said, I think we can also include our EMS personnel and our police officers, just ask, you know, just asking them, what do you see when you go in on calls? Do you see a huge need for support within our city for people to have social workers or mental health? And if there is a big need, then maybe that's something we can look at down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Light, I want to make a statement. You can correct me or add if you have any thoughts. Everybody knows that the city right now is under fiscal constraints, and each hiring, even of an existing position, has to be authorized by the council to fill. Thus, we don't have the funds available to create any new additional spots, at least for the rest of this fiscal year, and it may be like that for the next fiscal year. That's gonna be up to those in office coming up in the next quadrantium. Mr. Light, anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Parker? Name, address. I assume you still live in Hoover?
Sir?
Still live in Hoover?
Last time I checked.
Okay.
Sir. My name is John Parker. I live at 1699 Oak Park Lane in Hoover. I'm here to represent a pretty cool association. There's a lot going on in our city, a lot going on in the world, but there's some pretty cool things going on in our city. I represent, I'm the park president for Hoover Softball Association. Every year, we have an annual scholarship program. We've been running for 20-plus years, but as president for 10 years. Everybody up here was invited, the mayor was invited. Thanks for showing up. Appreciate it. It was the girls, we had nine girls that were honored in our annual scholarship this year for 2020. There are seniors attending Hoover High School, Spain Park High School, and/or any private school where these young ladies were able to play ball and grow up at our ballpark. This year, we gave out $14,500 in scholarship money, $14,500 in scholarship money to nine applicants. And in 10 years, we've given out $92,500 in scholarships to young ladies who are going out to... Thanks. That's our board and all the young ladies that put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into playing the game of softball. I want to thank Craig Moss. I think it's Park and Rec Month? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
It's hard to hear in here, and then I'm half-deaf, so it even makes it worse. I work with Craig Moss, the director of Parks and Rec. He's fabulous to work with, and all the guys at our park and in the entire department who come and help us out. I want to thank them for all their effort, and also all the volunteers at our ballpark, coaches, board members, team moms, park moms, that have made our park a pretty nice park. So, thank you very much, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of those wonderful young ladies.
Thank you, sir.
And a second note, I want to thank the police department and the fire department and all the first responders that take care of us. They do a fabulous job, and I can't go there myself and tell them that, so if somebody would pass that on, they probably don't hear it enough. But when I go to bed at night, I know I'm pretty well protected. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. This is all we have here in person. Mr. Coe, is Mr. Delano still in the waiting area?
He's on the wait.
Well, wherever they're waiting. Mr. Delano? Mr. Delano, please unmute your...
Yes, I'm still here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. If you'd please give us your name, address, and the city you reside in.
Okay. My name is Jim Delano, and I reside at 1492 Scout Trace in Hoover. And I want to thank Council President Smith, Mayor Bricato, and the other members of the council and the mayor's staff and the public for their time tonight. Tonight, I want to bring two points for your consideration. They both involve how the city is supporting and being inclusive of persons that have disabilities or elderly or have chronic medical conditions. COVID-19 has created new groups of people in our community that need accommodations to go about their daily lives. My first point is that the city needs to proactively address how we'll provide reasonable accommodations to those who have disabilities, which includes members of the community that are high-risk for COVID. When we first inquired about absentee voting, my wife was told that no accommodations would be provided, and we had to come in and get our ballots. When inquiring about other city services, the initial response was the same. No accommodations had been considered at that time, and the city employees were not required to wear masks, which is still the case in the Shelby County Safety Complex. To be fair, a webpage is available for voting questions, which was not made clear to us initially, and we were also provided the name of a city employee who can help support and develop individual accounts at a city facility. While this may seem appropriate to some, it took us way too many messages, and each family with a disability still has to go through the same process for each individual request. We are used to having to challenge the status quo for our rights. There are many in the community who are not and will either take undue risk or just give up their rights. The city needs to proactively think about how they will be inclusive of high-risk members of the community, as the number of people needing reasonable accommodations has increased with the spread of COVID-19. My second point is the enforcement of the Jefferson County mask ordinance. Yours have been virtually silent, and many businesses in the community have not even put up the required signs, nor are they expecting their patrons to abide by the ordinance. I have seen only one Facebook post on the city's official page that used the word "may." It was not very decisive. It is clearly not fair for the businesses who are making a good-faith effort to comply with the ordinance when there are others that are facing no consequences for their lack of compliance. The city leadership needs to clearly convey their expectation... The city leadership needs to clearly convey their expectation that businesses comply, and more importantly, Mobile, Monry, Mountain Brook, and Tuscaloosa are community health by making expectation clear in their own ordinances. I clearly state they support the health of the community by supporting and enforcing the Jefferson County ordinance. By not clearly supporting this ordinance, you are not being inclusive of members of the community that are high-risk for COVID and in need of the city's support of their right to be safe and public. Additionally, you are not clearly telling the community that you value the health of the community. The economy is extremely important to all of us. Without a healthy workforce and community, none of the businesses will be able to stay open, and we look like hypocrites as we ignore the pleading of the healthcare workers that our community was calling heroes just a few months. If we wear masks, the more of a burden we place on those workers. If the community does not get healthy, businesses will continue to telecommute, which limits spending. Other states will continue to impose quarantines that prevents businessmen and women from traveling to increase revenue, and businesses will suffer under the burden of a sick workforce and public. Now is not the time for us to be complacent. We all need to do our part to ensure the community we live in stays healthy and provides for the inclusion of those with disabilities. That includes city leadership. Taking a stand once is easy, to stand for the right thing is hard. As with most business, the right thing to do is never the easy thing to do. Right now, we need to see the leaders in the city start leading us down a road to a healthy, respectful, and inclusive community. Thank you for your time and consideration and my concerns.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your statement. For those of you getting ready to come online, we need to try to keep your statement as short as possible. We've got over 40 people asking to speak this evening, so we need to try to move along as quick as we can.
Mr. President.
Dr. Middlebrooks.
Last Monday, I spoke with Allen Rice, to give with our community services officer, concerning accommodated services to high-risk populations for city services. If he could, I'd like to get an update from him on that.
As Dr. Middlebrooks mentioned, he had a conversation with me last week. I can speak to part of the comments about city services. I was brought into that on June 19th with an email from Melanie Posey. I think she had received some commentary off the Facebook page, and one of the questions was, how will the city support? This was an email from, it was from Melanie, but it included Mr. and Mrs. Delano, because I think they had initiated the conversation and the questions. How will the city support the high-risk community during this reopening? Will public services have accommodations in place to serve those who will still be unable to go into these public facilities due to their high risk? ADA will apply to the city and all businesses that reopen, so it would be nice to hear how the city is doing their part to serve the most vulnerable. So, I replied a couple days later, on the 22nd, no, I'm sorry, I replied on that day, I replied on the 19th, and said, thanks for making me aware if the Delanos need to conduct any business with the city. I feel that doing so in person might cause them harm or undue exposure. They can contact De Nance, who serves as the city's ADA coordinator, De will help them navigate any issues they might have. Interestingly, ADA does not apply to COVID-19, but we felt like that was probably the best process for us to use. And got a response from Mr. Delano three days later, and then in staff meeting this past Tuesday, we had a discussion about this. De and I had devised a process, and I talked to department heads and got some feedback from them about different types of services we may be able to offer in an accommodated fashion, and I sent this email the next day. In staff meeting, we discussed requests for certain city services to be provided on a curbside or limited contact method due to COVID concerns. De Nance will be coordinating these requests and connecting citizens with the correct point of contact and the related city department. We envision that this will be on an appointment basis. Not every city service can be delivered this way, but we will strive to do as much as we can when needed. Also, there are many different business transactions that might be achievable by email, phone, et cetera, where the citizen will not even have to come into a city facility at all. As we talked, it was decided that this is a service we can provide going forward for those needing physical accommodations, even beyond the period of time that we have to deal with COVID. Please assist De with fulfilling these needs as she seeks to navigate them on behalf of our residents. So, I think we've put a process in place. Dr. Middlebrooks, it actually will outlive the COVID concerns and will be value-added to anybody who needs any type of accommodation, whether they are officially covered by ADA or not, it's still the right thing to do. I was, Friday morning of last week, I was in local business and was behind a lady in line who was trying to make a return. She was obviously hard of hearing, or could not hear, and was having to type out questions and comments on her phone and then show it to the clerk. It was laborious for both of them, but they worked it out, and I just stood there thinking, if that lady needed to conduct city business, we now will have a process in place where she could send an email, use appropriate communications equipment, get in touch with De, and De would navigate for her whatever needed to be done, and she would have a much easier transaction with us than she was having at that establishment. So, we're excited about it, I'm glad it's been brought forward, I appreciate you bringing it up as well independently, and I think this is a process that's going to work, and I'm certain that our department heads are going to do everything they can to make these accommodations.
Thank you.
Mr. Rice, Ms. Delano just made a statement that she's got some information she would like to share as far as the statement that you made. Perhaps you could just provide your email address, and she could send you an email?
Sure, be happy to, I've got hers, so I'd be happy to send you...
All right, well, if you could email her and ask her so she could respond.
Okay, and the previous commentary about not providing absentee ballots, not making accommodate, I'm just not privy to that, I wasn't in those discussions, I don't know who from the city might have made those statements, or if they were made, I'm just not aware of that.
And I can address some on absentee voting, but I wasn't, I've been telling everybody that they can absentee vote, that we're actually taking applications right now. We, of course, don't have the ballots in until later on in July, after the statements of candidacy, and after we get them in from the election services. But as of right now, there's actually, on our website at hooveralabama.gov, there is, under the government page, a page for elections, and it's for absentee voting, and it gives links to the absentee voter information, it gives the municipal absentee ballot application link, and an emergency absentee ballot application. It also states that I'm currently taking those applications, that they can be hand-delivered, or that they can be forwarded by the US Mail or commercial carrier, and it also gives some other dates and things that apply to absentee voting. And I've actually already started taking in applications for that, so...
Thank you.
I've mailed them out and received some back.
I believe some members of the public are asking that you respond to Ms. Delano, but really, until you have her information, it'd be kind of hard for you to make a public statement at this time.
Yes, sir, I think that's correct, I'd be happy to look at anything she submits and respond to her and copy the council and the mayor.
Very good, thank you. Next, I'm sorry? DW? Okay, oh, okay.
Yes.
DW, your name, address, and city, please.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Daniel Walters, my address is 4008 Glenwood Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, and while I'm not a resident of Hoover, I do have interests that do reside there. I drive to Hoover minimum twice weekly, I spend my money there, I have close personal friends who reside...
What would you like to speak to tonight?
Yeah, so, I'm getting to that. I really would like to ask the council to address a few issues that I'm seeing that, you know, I'm unaware that they are being addressed and being addressed directly. The first would, I'd love the council to address the fact that when they were taken into custody this weekend...
Sir, you're not a resident of the city, you do not have a business in the city, therefore, we're going to let Hoover citizens speak. Next, let's go to C. McInnes. All right, and Sharon Wang.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Ms. Wang.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, can you give us your name, address, and city you live in?
Yes, so, my name is Sharon Wang, I live at 500 Whitestone Way, Hoover, Alabama, 35226. I have been a resident of Hoover since I was born.
And what can we do for you this evening?
I would like Frank Bracato to address how he is handling protesters and the aggressive nature that his police department is using. His police department allowed an officer to come...
Ms. Wang, we're not going to, we're not going to deal with communications between you and the mayor in such a way.
No, I am a resident.
Thank you for listening.
Sir, I am a resident.
Good evening, I'm Keith Williams, I actually live in Birmingham, Alabama, but, real quickly, I have sent a letter to the mayor and the city council.
I need your address.
It has to do with...
Since you don't reside in Hoover, do you have a business in Hoover?
No, I do not have a business in Hoover, but I think you really want...
Have you provided your address yet?
I live in Birmingham, Alabama.
I need your street address.
Okay, my street address is 456 Kappa Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, 35205.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and the reason why I am on here is the council concerning the arrest of two activists...
We're not speaking to any law enforcement or court issues at this time, thank you, Mr. Corley, is there another way that you would like to see these type of questions addressed?
No, sir, during the comment period, it's at the discretion of the chair as to how to handle those. There's not a legal requirement to add any comments.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Cope, is there anyone that would like to speak to any city business or city issues other than law enforcement or court issues? So, we have no one else who would like to speak to city issues?
I heard something, kind of...
Ms. Covington, can you unmute yourself?
Um, my name is Grace Covington, I reside at 4114 Heather Hedg Lane, Birmingham, Alabama, 35226, even though it is a Hoover address, it falls under Birmingham. I would just like to say, without being interrupted, please, that you are silencing residents of Hoover, and that's wrong, and that's all I have to say, but that's completely...
Thank you. Unless anyone has business with the council that does not include law enforcement or court actions, I'm getting ready to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. President, I move for adjournment.
Second. A motion and a second, we're adjourned.